Good morning, everyone. For those of you expecting Jonathan Butler from One Berkshire this morning, you're going to have to make do with me. I apologize. I am the understudy for Jonathan this morning. Tom Bernard, President and CEO of Berkshire United Way. And it is wonderful to be here with you for the State of the County presentation. There are so many people to thank, so many people who've contributed to this work. I just want to start by thanking our hosts here at the Berkshire Innovation Center. Thank you. I want to thank Milltown Capital. I want to thank the Berkshire Black Economic Council, who'll be presenting later. I want to thank our partners at Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, who did just a huge amount of work in organizing and preparing the presentation and the data with support from sector members of the Berkshire Leadership Impact Council, or BIC. So we're in the BIC, talking about BIC. Can't make those things up. And just to give you a quick overview, actually, before I do that, I'll just acknowledge that State Representative Tricia Farley Bouvier is in the room. Good morning, Tricia. And Mayor Tyre's here. Good morning, Mayor. So the Berkshire Leadership Impact Council, or BIC, came together in 2016. It's an informal group of sector leaders from across the county, representing a range of sectors, including arts, tourism and culture, education, health and healthcare, food and agriculture, faith-based initiatives, government, the nonprofit sector, housing, immigration, and a number of other sectors. And the purpose of BIC is to be the convener, the organizer, the connector on sector-driven approaches to the common cross-cutting challenges that we all deal with here in the Berkshires. And one of the key ways that we deal with them, we have a number of plans that have been put in place over the past number of years. We have the Berkshire Blueprint. We have the education strategy. We have the housing report that just came out. And if you haven't read the housing report, I really want to recommend it. It's a terrific presentation of where we are in the county, as well as having some actionable strategies for work to address that. And I know we'll talk more about that. But again, all of this work relies on data. We know that's true. In this space, this space would not be here if the advocacy and the case-making over years to realize the vision of the Berkshire Innovation Center hadn't had good data to back it up. We know that's true of the investment decisions that Milltown makes as they look to make impact in the community. And in my organization, Berkshire United Way, our philanthropy and our approach is driven by the data that we ask for and we address with our partners to see how our investments, which is to say the dollars that come to us, flow back into the community to make positive change. So in addition to having positive action plans, we need to be able to track progress. And the way that we track progress is with data. So the work of Berkshire, the Berkshire Benchmark Project, was to compile that data from a point in time from reputable, reliable sources so that we have a baseline for moving forward. So what we'll talk about today is that data. We'll talk about some of the priorities. And then we'll take this back with the members of BIC and really translate it into action plans and into the places where our work can support the work of the sectors and activate these plans using data. So what you'll have now is a brief overview from Jake Everwine about the indicators. Mark Malloy will walk us through the benchmarks' data. And then we'll talk, we'll hear from Milltown about the investment strategies in the community. And then have two really good case studies on how data gets used. The first one from the Berkshire Housing Practitioners and the other one from the Berkshire Black Economic Council. And then I'll come up and do a very brief wrap-up. So that's the run of show. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jake. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. It's nice to see you all with pants on. My name is Jake Everwine. I suspect my job today is to serve as setup for the morning. It's so nice to see you all again in three dimensions. I've come to appreciate personally any time that I'm allowed out of my basement. So it's good to be here today. My setup job is to ensure the next 600 seconds, you will believe that data is fun, funny, and funky, yet data is the wave, am I going to do this right? That we simply just can't avoid. And I feel a little anxious, given my mentor, Kim Morandi, who teaches data, is in the room. I hope I do a good job. As was offered by the artificial being Joy in the science fiction film Blade Runner. Mere data makes a man, A, C, and T, and G. So I begin by asserting the importance of data as the backbone of who we are. It is our DNA. And possibly because we're the product of patterns, A, C, T, and G, we engage in a world in an attempt to make sense of data within which we swim and live. Is, not Jonathan, but Tom pointed out, the Berkshire Leadership Impact Council emphasized the importance of data in understanding conditions in Berkshire County by stating the goal of reviewing and sharing data and trends from across the county. What we offer today, the benchmarks, is a result of that charge developed by BIC almost two years ago. You have to bear with me. I got like two hands and clickers. And why is this data attitude so important? Maybe you're wondering if this is just another jump-the-shark moment? Well, we believe, some of you get that and some of you don't, right? I got a lot of like old references in here. So I'm like, I am getting old. Well, we believe that intentionally collecting, organizing, analyzing, and debating data, we can better understand trends. We can find bright spots, learn from them, promote them, replicate them, identify gaps in order to close them, prioritize areas of investment, set targets, measure outcomes, and really invest in high-yield strategies. So I say, why not? And to be honest, numbers are super cool. Take this one, for example, the imaginary number, a number I, or the square root of negative one, which can't be real. Imagine that. Numbers have a way to unleash our imagination and stimulate creative thought. Think Jackson Pollock, M.C. Escher, the rock band Tool, or the cadence of Amaya Angelou poem. And for many of us, data numbers are a bit scary and will frustrate. You've seen this one on Facebook. I know you have. You've spent too much time on it. The point being, numbers stretch our thinking. They force us to see the world in new ways. And they often yield solutions that are, well, surprising. So whether you've calculated three, or eight, or 12, you've each approached something else. You've each approached the problem in a slightly different manner. And that alone is significant. And numbers can drive emotion and move to action. Who can argue? My all-time hero, the toughest man in baseball, Pete Rose, with 4,256 hits, doesn't deserve a seat in the Hall of Fame, for crying out loud. Something us '80s Phillies fans continue to fight for. And did I say numbers drive emotion? You're not laughing. They also tell us something about our world as exists today and how it might look tomorrow. I did say that numbers are surprising, right? Of course, numbers help us to predict the future. Can we see into the future? Probably not. But probabilities can help us to take more reliable steps to shape it. Don't smoke, less likely to face lung cancer. Not guaranteed, but way less likely. And if you're still looking for love, optimal stopping theory can help. Set the number of target dates you anticipate in your life before you find your perfect match, let's say 10. And when you're a third of the way through, that would be three or four, pick the next one who's better than any of the previous. And there you have it, math and love. Of course, you can do what I do, which is pick the first one before she knows any better. Beyond social phenomenon, we can also use numbers to tell us something about ourselves, our weight, our blood pressure, even general intelligence. Now, this is not in the point in the program where I start calling out numbers and asking people to stand up. I promise. General intelligence is a somewhat challenged measure, but also a highly correlated measure that someone like me has been able to overcome simply by making sure I surround myself with people with higher G's than I have, the law of averaging up. And I bet you're wondering, has general intelligence gone up or down, on the rise or decline? Most of you, I suspect, would argue it's on the decline. And it's not due to consuming electronics and funny YouTube pet videos. It's more likely due to the fact that we tried to reduce the knock out of gasoline engines and we added lead to the fuel. The result was lead pollution across the globe that knocked our collective IQ down a few notches. And eating smart food, this is a study, by the way. Sorry, I didn't get that up there. Eating smart food won't help make it go away. Of course, data helps us to diagnose. In the case of my daughter, you can't get from Lee to Boston if this is what your fuel gauge reads. As James Heller sort of said, there ain't no 10,000 miles ahead with this gauge. And data helps us to nudge. Elliot Kipchoge, you all know, I always talk about him in my speeches. Greatest marathon runner of all times, used a 1% better shoe to push him past the unofficial fastest marathon ever, under two hours. The point being, it's not often huge changes that are needed to secure profoundly remarkable results. Sometimes it's just 1%. So today, if you're feeling trapped in the data world, the digitized matrix, and you long for the days of old, no electronics, no automated monthly reports or constantly pinging phones, and you're thinking about fighting your way out, believing it's just a flesh wound like the Monty Python and his band of flawed worries assured themselves, believing the times could be changed. Let's say you even decide to paddle your way out to a deserted island to escape it all. There's no escaping. You and your friend Wilson will still find ways to measure the world, even if it's counting days by notching them on trees. Data, it is in your backbone. So then, how do we make sense of all of it and not lose our minds as we swim in the sea of data? Our take from the data is that we identify indicators. And these are data points we believe are most important to pay attention to. And we organize into formats called dashboards we can use to communicate and interact with. It's all about finding ways to see, even if using a simple format like a hard copy baseball scorebook, something some of you may be familiar with. The importance is technology is really not a requirement. It's rather the what and why we decide to look at that should drive us. So today is in great part about these indicators. You'll see Mark return to the podium in a couple minutes. Indicators are a simple way to signal the state of something, what is. And an indicator then becomes a data point among many we choose to measure, monitor, and react to. And these indicators are not randomly chosen numbers. For example, if I say 17, each of you will likely associate that number with something. But few of us the same thing. You've got to put the indicator in context. And a few ways to do that are, you can benchmark. You can compare your data against other averages, against standards. You can examine your data over trends, over time, either backwards or forwards, projecting. And you can disaggregate your data and looking under the hood at particular experiences of individual groups, subregions, subcategories. And generally, we talk about data in terms of qualitative and quantitative buckets. Many folks are familiar with quantitative, the numerical, and objective. But the qualitative, the narrative, and the holistic, the storytelling, can be, as equal, or even in some cases, more compelling. So in a moment, we'll show you those indicators and what we identified as those of most importance, the ones that will tell the story, the story of individuals in our community. This data helps us to dive deeper into the analysis by affording a means of describing what has and is happening, diagnosing why it happened, predicting what might happen, building towards a future outcome, and then developing a theory of action, an if-then statement, that if we do something, something else will happen. Ultimately, the goal of improving our community and the individual experiences. And since we can't include all indicators, that's simply too much. We seek those power indicators that help us to hone in on a subset of key metrics that we can use to communicate. So how best to organize then? Well, into dashboards, an accessible format that facilitates understanding utility. Whether playing the stock market, no one groaned. My sink-or-swim platform these days is a little bit more sink than swim. Some of you know that. And maybe you hung onto your Moderna stock a little bit too long when it was heading to 500. I'm just saying. Or you seek to represent population because you're going to build a railroad and you want to represent it in different formats, by size of town, by density, based on geography. An easy way to link both geography and people and unique representations that help people to understand. Or maybe going back to baseball, you want to move past that paper scorebook and go Billy Bean-style with pitch location, on-base percentage, and things of that sort. Or possibly, you suffered through yesterday's half marathon and it was the suffer fest. By the way, you did it. Congratulations, really. What a tough day. And you want to get a sense of your heart rate, your temperature, your cadence, how much your head bobbed up and down, or bopped up and down. There's a dashboard for that. This is one. Or maybe you're just curious about the connection between how kids are reading in grade three, which is a power indicator, and their participation in early quality pre-K for possible answers. I know my educators in the room would have strong thoughts about that one. Just wondering. So we turn our attention to broad community indicators and really ask ourselves, how do we know how we're doing? Are we making gains? Are we holding steady? Or are we falling behind? So we seek to improve these big reports that you've all seen, 149 pages of pure yawn fest that tend to sit on shelves collecting dust. And we move towards formats that are much more dynamic. And these were a few that we shared and looked at as we were in the development. This is actually from Berkshire DeConic, their closer look. But just the graphics, the look and the feel, you can already get a better sense from that silly, you know, Table of Contents, 149-page document. Or this one from, I think, Star Communities. Each of these tiles flips over, helps you understand the indicator and the data point within each. I'll just flip through a couple others. Here's one that's based around a circle. And the movement from sort of completion to incomplete moves from inside to outside on the circle. Here's a dashboard from Nevada. This is Clark County. And so they sort of organize theirs into key buckets, key indicators. And then they benchmark anything. I can't, I don't know if you can see it on the screen. It's too small, against their state averages. Another one, Talent25, is a dashboard developer. I think this is in, I want to say Virginia. And these tiles, again, flip, some key indicators. You can, people can quickly look and see how the community is doing. And then the tiles will flip based on, offering more detail on each of the signs. Vital Signs is a linkable out of Toronto. This is an interesting one because they combine both the data and the storytelling into their platform. And we talked a lot about that, you know, how the narrative was also going to be very important to the work that we do. Just a couple more. And then we return and close on the Berkshire Benchmarks, which was, and you're going to see what is, in just a minute. And I will say that I use Berkshire Benchmarks a lot. I did a lot, used a lot when I was doing my research. And we all knew it needed refreshing. And so today, we're really looking forward to having Mark share that with you. So I will close by just admitting a couple things, which if you haven't figured it out by now, you should have. One is, I truly am in love with data. Almost as much as my wife, but not quite. But it's number two. And two, I will reinforce that the goal is to move closer to Foucault's notion of knowing that what we do and what we do does. It's a confusing sentence if you read it at the bottom, but it's a great sentence. So if I were to, example, ask you to imagine one or two things you could do to improve our Berkshire region, then I would absolutely follow it with a question. And how do you know that is the thing to do? Thank you.
Thank you for coming today. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Mark Malloy. I'm the data manager at the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission and the project manager for Berkshire Benchmarks. I'm going to walk you through the background of Berkshire Benchmarks, show you the new website, and then we'll also go through the new State of the County report. As Jake and Tom have mentioned, a few years ago, BIC decided to start using data and indicators to help better inform their work. So they hired Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, which manages Berkshire Benchmarks, to develop the indicators on the region. The goal of Berkshire Benchmarks is to work with the community to understand priorities and help inform the region on how we are doing. Berkshire Benchmarks does this by enhancing the quality of the region's access, I'm sorry, enhances the region's access to quality data and analysis. We can make more informed decisions and track performance over time through better data. So we do this in two ways. The first is with indicators. We've worked collaboratively with the community to define what is important to the region and how to track, or how do we track those, I'm sorry, here. We've worked collaboratively with the community to find what's most important and track progress to improving those items. We also highlight organizations and what they're doing to improve those items. The second is data. We gather reliable data on the region using a variety of local, state, and national data sets. We created this library to assist decision-makers, service providers, and others who need reliable data to inform their work. In early 2020, we started to work on revamping Berkshire Benchmarks and to develop the indicators. We reviewed literature, regional reports, State of the County reports from other regions, and other indicator websites. And we developed a list of over 300 potential indicators that could be used by the region. This was too many for any one group to review. So we broke it into eight sectors: economy, education, environment, government, health, housing, social environment, and transportation. We also added a general demographic sector, just looking at some of the common demographic items that are essential for us to track, such as total population and age. The sectors were led by a member of BIC, who is involved with that sector, a member of BRPC, who works in that sector, and then a member of the community. The leads generated a list of potential members, targeting 10 to 15 diverse members per sector. In the end, we had over 100 sector members. The sectors then met and reviewed what was important to the region within that sector and reviewed potential indicators. They narrowed down the list to 10 to 12 indicators per sector based on what was important. After looking at the data, they then prioritized three to five key indicators for each sector. This resulted in 82 total indicators that we're tracking, of which 32 are key indicators. So little interactivity. If you want to all pull out your cellphones and go to vbox.app, V-E-V-O-X dot A-P-P. There's a little survey. There's a code you're going to have to enter. Can you see that code?
No.
Yeah, let me see. I can't see everything from my screen. There we go. So if you enter that code, you should be given a quick little survey, just what sector you represent. People seeing that? We'll give you responses, so that's good. So I'll give you a few minutes to enter your sector. Just want to see what kind of diverse group we have here. Just give you another minute to enter it. Don't close the website because we're going to have more survey questions later in the presentation. I see a few more people still on their phones, so I'll give it another minute. All right, well, I'm going to close it. Sorry about this. That didn't work out. I'm sorry. It worked before. So we're going to just go on. There, oh, we saw it. There we go. So we have a lot of people from housing and then uniform number from health, social, education, and economy. So moving on. So I can't talk about State of the County without talking about COVID-19 and the work we've had to do and how we've had to adapt over the last few years as we have worked on this project. The pandemic started just as we started working on Berkshire Benchmarks update, completely changed how we were going to gather input from the sectors and delayed the entire process. The pandemic also caused delays in data gathering and subsequent data releases, and even changed what data was available. It also highlighted the difficulty in obtaining timely data at a county level, much less a municipal level. While some of the data is released every month, most data sources take several years before they release the data, especially at the county and municipal level. We are beginning to see the impact of the pandemic on the region in some of the data, but it will take several more years to see the full effect of the pandemic. As an example, the most well-known dataset we have is a decennial census. And this really highlights the impact of the pandemic. Many of you may recall, two years ago, right as the pandemic started, the Census was starting their decennial census. It ended up causing a delay of several months before they really went out there and started collecting the data. They had a variety of problems. They had significant delays in processing. The full suite of 2020 Census data will not be released until mid-2023, twofold years later than originally expected due to the pandemic. We also just learned last week that the Census overcounted Massachusetts by about 2%. That's around 2,500 people in Berkshire County. They overcounted. This is a well-funded operation that takes a decade of planning, and they still struggle to get an accurate data out on time. Other data sources have faced similar delays. It's just not as well-publicized. So there are limitations in the data that is available and what we can use. Throughout this process, there was data that participants asked about but did not get included in Berkshire Benchmarks website or on the State of the County report or not the desired level of detail. All the data presented in this report and Berkshire Benchmarks website are from reputable and publicly available data sources published online. Many data sources do not collect data at a scale below the county level or provide subgroup data, such as race, age, or sex. As an example, one of the primary data sources we use is the U.S. Census Bureau's American Community Survey, or ACS. Due to the small size of Berkshire County and its municipalities, Berkshire Benchmarks misuse the five-year average data. The ACS uses a small population sample. Only 1% a year do they sample. And therefore, there's a margin of error associated with every data point. With smaller geographies and subsets of the population, the margin of error can be large and cause the data to be unusable. Much of the ACS data presented in this report and on the website is available at the national, state, county, and municipal level for the entire population. However, when looking at the subgroups, such as race, and ethnicity, and sex, the data is not usable at the municipal level due to the margin of error. I can show you poverty data at the county level and the municipal level. I can show you poverty by race at the county level. But I can't show you poverty by race at the municipal level due to that margin of error. The ACS and most of the data, most other data sources are only samples and are not absolute. So you should look at the trends in the data and not the actual numbers. As Jake mentioned, there's quantitative and qualitative data. Very early in the process, it was determined that the quantitative data would not provide all the answers. So we decided to do a survey of residents that we would repeat every three to five years. We asked the sector teams what information they wanted to know that was not being covered within the We asked the sector teams what information they wanted to know that was not being covered within the quantitative indicators. This resulted in a list of qualitative indicators. The list was then organized, narrowed down, refined for nomenclature, reading level, and a survey was distributed in January. We had just over 3,000 responses from the county, fewer than we hoped for, but the respondents were representative of the county population geographically by age, race, ethnicity, and income. So we feel it is representative of the county. I will not discuss the survey much today due to time limits, but we, you can find the summary results online at Berkshire Benchmarks and in the state-of-the-county report. We will also be releasing a report in a few months on the survey. So now I'm gonna transition over. There we go. So this is the new Berkshire Benchmarks website. It is intentionally pretty simple in what is available to do. It's really looking at data and looking at indicators. We do have a report repository on there, so we're collecting regional, even local municipal agency reports on the county and on what is going on, and we are posting them there so that everyone can access them a bit easier. There's about a dozen of them up there right now. But mostly, you're gonna use this for looking at the data and indicators. I'm gonna start with the data, and I apologize if this is a bit clunky because I'm driving on that screen over there, not on my laptop. It's on all of this, but that's the one I can see. So this is the data page. There's a couple of things you can do. You can view all data. You can look at some of the more requested data sets, and you can also look at a community profile. So I'm just gonna click on the community profile first. This is Berkshire County coming up. It says Peru, but it's gonna change. It's just a little glitch in how it loads. So there's Berkshire County. It has some basic demographic data. You have age and gender, and I'm gonna show you this whole website really quick, so don't worry about reading everything. Generations, race, ethnicity. There is housing in there, housing information, price ranges, rent, affordability of housing. There is labor and economy, so employment and income levels. There is educational attainment and educational enrollment. So there's a lot of data very quickly available for the county, the state, or one of your municipalities. If you are doing a grant application for Clarksville, just click on that, get all the data you need on Clarksville, and you should be good to go. I want to show you the data library itself. I'm just gonna go in here. I will mention upfront, the developer of this is still working on importing data. So not all the data is fully functional right now. Having meetings with them a couple of times a week trying to get this ready. So I'm just, there's a long list of very large topic groups. I'm just gonna click on commuting. Next. Now hopefully this is, oops, sorry about that. Hopefully this is a bit easier to use than the old data clearinghouse on the old site. You can then choose a subtopic, and if I can see, I'm just gonna pick a couple because I can't really see what I'm looking at. And next, and then you can choose a geography. You can only do U.S., Massachusetts, or Berkshire County on its own, but if you're going for a municipality, you can choose multiple municipalities. Gives you a little summary of what you requested. Has a little map showing those three municipalities I chose, and it's color-coded by the values. It aggregates the values together for each of those municipalities, little pop-up menu there. Also aggregates it by those two choices I had, the two commuting types. And then there's the table itself, and you can download the table. Right now, the extension is only working Chrome, so if you're using Chrome, you can download it. If you're not, switch over to Chrome. Hopefully soon that'll be fixed. So now I just want to show you the indicators, which is really what we're here for today. So we have those sectors, and I'm just gonna click on economy. You have the indicators that the sector chose for the economy. We have the survey results, and you have current efforts. Current efforts, if you expand them, little brief description, little web links, so you can go find out more on that effort. If you have an effort that's not listed and you want shown, let me know and we can add it in. We have the survey results. So again, a short little description of what the results are for that survey item. You can expand multiple of these to find out more. And then the indicators. So let me choose one of the simple ones, gross domestic product. So these are all in Tableau, and so what you can do, you can hover over and see the values change based on what you're, you're on top of. This is a pretty simple chart, just has, you know, the state, nation, and the county and nothing to do with it. Let's switch over to employment by sector. So this is sorted based on the largest sectors in the county. Healthcare and hospitality are on top. You can change the year, if I can see it correctly. You can see it quickly changes those values if I'm actually clicking it. It does change. And then it also shows you over time. This is total employment. We can see pretty stable employment in the county until 2020. We can choose one of the sectors. I don't know what I'm choosing here, and you can see how it went up. It's been growing that sector, and then the last two years, pretty significant decline in that sector. There's also, let's look at median household income. So some of them, depending on the data, you can choose and add a town onto the chart. Did that change? I don't think it did. Sorry, it's really hard to see. There we go. It does. There we go. So now there's four different lines over there, and you can see how your town is doing compared to the county, the state, and nation. There is a map. I don't know why it's zoomed out right now, but you can see how median household income varies by town. You can also change the year on that map. And then this one happens to have subgroup data. So I'm not gonna do it because I just can't see what I'm clicking over there. But you can choose, you want to see it by age or by race, and the chart will update, and you can see how things are changing over time. So that's the new website in a very quick overview. Let me go back to the presentation now. Yeah, I did that briefly, super brief. So let's talk about the state-of-the-county report, which is why you're all here. This is the state-of-the-county report. You can pick up your copy on the table outside as you leave. Hopefully, it's more colorful than most of our normal reports, to Jake's point. But hopefully, this, you know, will be informative for you, and you'll get something useful out of the report. So the report focuses on presenting the key indicators and trends and reviewing the data. We have drawn some conclusions across the indicators and survey responses. The report does not provide solutions, just identifies our successes and our challenges. It is up to you, our community, to develop those solutions. Now, all of you will agree with the successes and challenges, but this is what the indicators show us. Think of this as a baseline report, and we will work together over the next few years as a region we can, to monitor and see how the data changes. In a few years, we will reconvene the sectors and review the latest data and see if we need to make adjustments to what indicators we're using. As you listen to me over the next 15 minutes and later on when you read the report, please consider how the data impacts you, your organization, your community, and how the data will inform and support our shared work promoting prosperity and quality of life here in the Berkshires. So in reviewing the 82 indicators, placing an extra focus on 32 key indicators as well as reviewing the survey results, there are some key takeaways. I will go over all of these in more detail, but in summary, our region has seen numerous successes over the last few years. These successes include increase in income, decrease in poverty and unemployment, a healthier environment, and increased stability of the young adult population. As a region, we can and must celebrate our successes. Many individuals and organizations have contributed to these positive developments, and these efforts need to continue to ensure our continued success moving forward. Yet the region also faces challenges. Our children struggled academically during the pandemic. Housing is getting less affordable to many low and middle-income residents. Mental health challenges are getting worse, and there is an increase in reports of families in distress. Many of these indicators show disparities in the county when looking at the data by race and ethnicity. By working together, we can address these problems, and Berkshire County can become a healthier, more equitable, and more welcoming community. So let's dig into this actual data. I am going to go through this quick because there's a lot to cover, but all this data is available online, and of course, read about it in the state-of-the-county report. So within the economy sector, the first takeaway is the increase in income. Berkshire County has seen an increase in median household income. It is now at 62,166, a 27% increase since 2010. The state and nation continue to be above the county, so we have some catching up to do, but we are improving. Our incomes were relatively stable through 2015, but have since started going up, and that is good news for the region. The unemployment rate dropped from 2010 to 2019, and then we saw the COVID unemployment spike in 2020. The region's rate in 2020 was 9.1%, has subsequently come back down to 6.5% in 2021, which is an annual rate. We know the March 2022 rate has continued to drop down to 4.9%. We're still above the 2019 rate, but we're rapidly approaching it, and hopefully, by the end of the year, we will reach it. This shows that our jobs have mostly rebounded since the pandemic started. In the education sector, we know the pandemic impacted our children academically. Among the chosen indicators, the team chose the Next Gen MCAS third-grade English and eighth-grade math assessments. For the Next Gen MCAS proficiency for third-grade English, where we, we saw a decline in the percentage who scored proficient or advanced in English from 2019 to 2021, from 55 to 48%. And the county is below the state, but not too much. There was no test in 2020 due to the pandemic, so this may just be a one-year deviation. However, when we look at math, we see something different. Berkshire County has seen a significant decline in the percentage of students who score proficient or advanced in eighth-grade MCAS, Next Gen MCAS math tests. Since 2018, our students have dropped from 39% to 18%, over a 50% decrease. The county has also seen, is also significantly below the state. It is important to acknowledge that some school districts are doing good and some are not. But overall, as a region, we are struggling. 2022 tests were taken in April, May, so in a few months, we will see those results and see if there's been any change in this. Within the environment sector, we have seen a significant improvement in air quality. We're measuring air quality as the annual average ambient concentration of particulate matter at 2.5 micrograms per cubic meter. The measure is important as this size particle particulate matter is often associated with respiratory distress. The region has dropped from 13 micrograms per cubic meter to six micrograms, over a 50% decrease in the last 20 years. So our air quality has been improving. We have also been protecting more land. About 40% of Berkshire County is now protected. We have also seen significant increases in the percentage of endangered species habitat that is protected. So the environment is doing better. It's not everywhere, but in most locations, it's doing better in the county. In the government sector, property taxes have continued to go up in our greater proportion of municipal budgets. 2003, the county's percent of revenue from local property taxes was 50%, and it has now increased to 60%. Meanwhile, the percentage of revenue from the state has declined from 27% to 28, I'm sorry, to 20% over the same time. So we're relying more on local property taxes and less on the state. This doesn't mean the state's giving us less money, it's just a smaller proportion of our municipal budgets. In the health sector, we are seeing several indicators pointing to worsening of mental health. The number of days that people reported being mentally unhealthy in the last 30 days has been steadily rising since 2013, increasing from 3.4 days to five days, an increase of 1.6 days every 30 days. So over the course of year, that's a couple of extra weeks of mentally unhealthy days. In addition to the number of days of poor mental health, the number of opioid-related deaths has increased significantly from four in 2010 to 56 in 2020. The increase can be caused by many things, but mental health is one of the main things for that. Housing is one area where the indicators don't reflect the current situation very well. The chart uses the 2016 to 2020 ACS data, so it barely covers the start of the pandemic. It indicates a surplus of low-income housing units and deficit of moderate and middle-income housing units. But we know that since the pandemic started, housing prices have skyrocketed, and this data is no longer accurate. We believe there is now a shortage in low, moderate, and middle-income ranges. This data also doesn't reflect the quality of the housing, and we know that's a huge issue for the region, especially among the lower-income housing units. We will hear more about the current housing situation later on in the program. In the social environment, we have seen a significant decline in poverty. In 2015, we were midway between the state and nation, had a rate close to 10%. Since then, it has decreased to 5.9%, dropping below the state level. This is fantastic news for the region. But as a reminder, this may not reflect the pandemic situation since this stops at the 2020. We'll have to monitor over the next few years, see if that poverty has gone back up. Another item that stood out in the social environment is the increase in families in distress. Since 2015, the county has seen an increase in restraining orders from 956 to 1,160, a 21% increase. We're still below the 2012 value, but this is something that needs to be monitored moving forward. Another aspect of family distress is child requiring assistance filings. In the four years on record, their filings have seen a 53% increase, from 1,500 filings to 2,277 filings in 2021. Again, something we need to pay attention to moving forward. Across-sector finding is the disparities by race and ethnicity. In every dataset which we can see the breakdown by race, the disparities are evident, especially between white and black. In this chart of median household income, you can see the whites have median household income of 63,651, while blacks have an income of 27,683. Whites have seen a 27% increase in 10 years, while blacks have seen a 13% decrease in that same time. This is not adjusted for inflation, so that would cause it to be an even more significant decline. What's also interesting is that the other races and ethnicities have seen increases, have moved from being closer to the black income to now closer to the white income. So definitely a challenge for the black population income. So definitely a challenge for the black population income. You can also see the disparities in poverty, while blacks have the highest percentage of individuals in poverty at thirty-one percent, and whites are at eight point four percent. All races and ethnicities have seen decreases, except for the black population, which has stayed the same. You will see in this chart a data glitch. The poverty rates released in two thousand and thirteen clearly had issues, so just ignore that one year and assume it's not there. Little while ago, the Berkshire chapter of the NAACP announced the report on redlining at Pittsfield. This chart helped support those findings. Seventy-two percent of white families own a home, while only twenty-eight percent of black families. They've both seen an increase since two thousand and ten, but there's still a long ways to go for blacks to catch up with whites. There are many other data points that show these disparities, and you can check them out online at Berkshire Benchmarks. At the end of the program, you'll hear more on this subject as well. And then finally, many of you may recall discussions that happened in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen about the projected population loss in Berkshire County. This loss would be due to the structural issues in our age cohorts, a high percentage of baby boomers, and a continued loss of young adults. If you look at the young adult, middle-aged population, aged twenty-five to forty-four, you can see a stability that has not been there before. It's very level going across those four ages. We will still lose some young adults, but they're getting replaced. And we will continue to lose population as the baby boomers and older Gen Xers pass, but the loss won't be as significant because we've stopped that loss of young adults. We're also going to have some serious workforce challenges as these baby boomers and Gen Xers retire, just because we don't have that supply behind them. But overall, that stability of young adults is really a positive thing for the region. So in summary, we have seen successes, and we must celebrate those, but we cannot stop working to continue to improve upon them. And we have challenges. The challenges are not unique to us, and there is a lot of work already happening to address them. Berkshire County is a wonderful place to live for some of the population. We must work together to address these problems so that we can become a healthier, more equitable, and more welcoming community for everyone. So let's see if this survey works again. What success is most important to the region? If you could only pick one, pick one of those that you think is the most successful, or most important, I should say. It is a hard choice. Just waiting for those numbers to stop moving. I think we're about there. So it's closing. So the young adults, stability of the young adult population, and the decrease in poverty and increase in income are all really highly important to you guys. So this is great. Now, we're going to ask you, what challenge should the region focus on? So which of these things do you think is most important for the region? This is a hard one. I struggled with this myself. All right, so I'm going to close this. We're going to take this back to Black to Think About. So disparities by race and ethnicity, decreased housing affordability, worsening mental health, and children struggling academically are all pretty high. So one more question. All right, I think we're going to stop it now. So race, housing, children struggling academically. So we see a little bit of difference there. Worsening mental health is not as high as it was in the previous slide. So we're going to take all this stuff and go back to Black and help them maybe work on some of their priorities with this data. So that's it for surveys. So I need to thank all of our sponsors for Berkshire Benchmarks. Without them, the State of the County Report and the new website would not have been possible, so a huge thank you to them. So now, I'm going to stop talking, and we're going to hear from some of the other organizations. So we're going to start with Carrie Holland from Milltown.
That's a lot to get through, but it's important stuff. Good morning. Thank you, everyone, for joining us as we celebrate the launch of the fully revamped Berkshire Benchmarks platform. We are nearing three years since the chairman of Milltown, Dave Mixer, challenged myself and our team to develop a report card, so to speak, for our region, to have a resource to learn from, an agnostic, unbiased reporting mechanism that would leverage data to indicate areas of progress and decline in our Berkshires community. My many thanks to the BRPC team, to our data team, many of which are here, and the community leaders who came together to support the vision. In some respects, this May and the release of this first Berkshire Benchmarks report marks a new baseline, dataset defined, established, and frozen in time, from which we can use to measure ourselves as we continue to improve our area. Improvement at our core, that is very much what we are aiming to accomplish with Milltown. Arrows? Okay. As noted, my name is Carrie Holland, Managing Director at Milltown, and we are a private community impact investment group. We leverage several techniques to invest in the Berkshires community, venture capital, real estate development, property renovation, operating businesses, community outreach, philanthropic programs, and grants, et cetera. We do all of this for the purpose of improving the Berkshires, making this a great place to live, work, and play. We are lucky to live in a county where so many share in those principles, where a majority of our community members are engaged, empathetic, hopeful, and interested in collaborations for the benefit of the whole. Among you all and our fellow Berkshire community members, there is a common topic of conversation, the "how are we doing" conversation. And I know that because I've had many of those conversations with people here in this room, join us upstairs, join us with PCTV streaming remotely. The topic transcends the personal and goes right into the state of the community. We dissect the ascents, declines, the positives, the challenges, the growths, the scarcities, and so on. From these comments and conversations, we see certain community narratives emerge that are often shared, repeated, and perhaps reinforced and affirmed in self-fulfillment. But the question remains, are they true? Do these community narratives actually reflect the reality of life in our community, of life in the Berkshires? Whether it's a narrative about housing, healthy living, crime, education, or the demands of our economy, how can we validate and better understand the narratives that reverberate through our community conversations? Thinking back to our mission at Milltown, to make the Berkshires a better place to live, we care about these narratives, or more importantly, we care about the narratives and the data and lived experiences of our community members that are driving those narratives. That matters. We are craving fact. We are craving data to help us better understand the focus of our work, the community. To validate our areas of focus and to understand the areas that will create mission impact, we need analytical insights. We need data. Berkshire Benchmarks will help us understand the key sector areas that define life in the Berkshires, to help us see the connections of how key community wellness indicators illuminate progress in challenge areas. Ultimately, the output of Berkshire Benchmarks will help us and many other groups engaged in community development and impact investing and place-based philanthropy answer an important question: Is it working? Are we, as community-focused practitioners, effective in the interventions we have committed investment and resources to? What is the quantitative and qualitative data telling us? Are we moving the needle in a particular sector area? Should we shift tactics and address a challenge in a different way? Is there meaningful progress in this missionary goal to where we can shift our focus and investment to a new area for community improvement? Is life getting better for the residents of Berkshire County? It is hard to make those calls confidently off of narratives alone. It feels much more comfortable building strategy with the support of data, analysis, and firsthand compiled community accounts, of which we now have in an organized, navigable, easy-to-digest format with Berkshire Benchmarks. Again, a huge note of thanks to the community leaders who have joined in supporting the overhaul of the Berkshire Benchmarks project and help bring meaningful data-driven insights into our daily community conversations. We look forward to our next convening, our next Community Report Card Day. Thanks.
I am Tom Matusko. I am the Executive Director of the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, but in this role, I really was one of the conveners of the Berkshire Housing Practitioners Group who worked on housing. And as you saw in the presentation that Mark did, you know, housing is one of the sectors that we're looking at in benchmarks, and one of the summary takeaways is that housing has been more and more unaffordable to Berkshire residents, and even more so with the COVID, you know, since the following of COVID. So our practitioners group really said, came up to the conclusion that we are in a Berkshire County housing crisis, a little bit stronger than unaffordable in that, but we are really in a crisis now. And what we did was we came up with a Berkshire, a housing vision for the Berkshires, which really is a call to action. And when I say "we," it was really the housing practitioners that worked on this material. And this came about by, before the pandemic, actually, when Jonathan Berkshire, from one Berkshire, was recognizing the need for housing from this business community. And I was recognizing the challenges our communities were facing, just getting employees to their town boards. And so we started to create this, we needed to come up with, what are we going to do about this? And literally, the day that the governor closed down the state, we were going to have our first meeting. And we had people in our office, actually, who were there, and we had to send them back. But over those two years, we worked remotely to come up with this strategy, and it is really, it's taking the data, this is an application of data, actually. So we looked at the data that we had from a so-called housing needs assessment, which was the hard part to look at, you know, whether the number of units, the shortages, those types of things, but moved into a call to action with over sixty different action strategies. Now, you might be a little bit nervous, and I'm going to go through all sixty. I'm not going to do that today, so we're really going to just hit some of the highlights. But first off, who are the practitioners? What we did was, we wanted to, and I want to thank those folks who made those commitments, but we had bankers, economic development, realtors, municipal community development, municipal planners, housing advocates, housing developers, and representatives from the NAACP. We use data, we use the data, a lot of qualitative data from our work in addition to our housing needs assessment. So we had a number of small focus groups with the banking community, for-profit developers, BIPOC representatives. That really supplemented our understanding, and that was especially important, as you heard from what Mark said, that, you know, since the COVID, you know, pandemic, that data numbers are really misleading. So one of the key items that we found in our work, both the quantitative and qualitative, we learned that there's a need to foster a diversity of quality housing options throughout the region. There really was a shortage of all units in the region, from mid-priced, both homeowner rental, scarcity of affordable housing units, few options for seniors to downsize, and overall, just a very limited number of units that are being created in the region. We also learned that we needed to create a welcoming framework for housing development. There frequently, and you see this in the paper all the time, that there's a lot of different opposition to housing development, and this is through court delays or even just coming out at town meeting and voting them. There's also, we learned that there was a stigmatization of affordable housing projects, which could be, you know, with some racial and ethnic bias undertones, that local support for housing was constrained and limited advocacy for housing development projects. Along with that, we learned that the state programs for housing really weren't that useful when it came to the small scale of the Berkshires. Another need was for municipal readiness, and if you're part of a zoning group or you need to hear about zoning, you'll know that we have a very much outdated regulatory framework. There is limited municipal staff capacity to advance complex housing projects. Complex housing projects, development projects are extensive, and they're very time-consuming, and limited or inadequate infrastructure as well. The developers, since we haven't had a lot of development, we have some terrific nonprofit, but the private sector really was often small and not very well capitalized. And this is something that is not, I think, not unknown as well, that there was a lack of skilled trades workers. If you've tried to find someone, a plumber or electrician, you'll know that that's a problem. And we also learned that, from the development side, it was more lucrative to work on the larger-scale housing for second homeowners rather than the development projects. The project of housing insecurity was also something that we learned, we need to address that, but it was really, this needs to be done at a county-wide level. It seems like it falls to Pittsfield and North Adams to deal with that, but it's a lot bigger issue throughout the county. There's rural homelessness and those types of things. So those are those, that needs to be addressed broader. And then, we needed to address our quality of our housing stock. Much of our housing stock was built, you know, before nineteen forty, and there needs to be an investment to maintain and upgrade that so that we can become energy-efficient and stop, you know, creating some of the blight in our communities. There's something called the thirty percent rule, that if you are going to make improvements to your home, that it's going to be more than thirty percent of the appraised value, you need to bring everything up to code. Now, if you're in a community where, you know, your assessed value is five hundred thousand and you want to add a bathroom, that's not a problem, but if your house is assessed at a hundred thousand and you want to add a bathroom, you're going to hit that thirty percent rule, and you're going to have to bring your entire house up to code. So those were some of the issues that we learned, and that's why we So those were some of the issues that we learned. And that's why we thought that it was really a crisis. And the impacts of that are, economic growth is stifled, the region's population, it affects the population, the ability to attract new people, this is what we were talking about, Mark was talking about earlier. Our agency just had a situation where we made an offer to a young woman from out of the state, and she couldn't find housing, and she turned us down. So it is, we have that practical experience. It also affects personal health and well-being. You know, there's so much data now about where you live and how you live, and the type of quality of housing does affect your well-being. And as Mark said, our mental health days are going down as well. It's a correlation there, clearly. And then, community impacts. And this is a bigger issue related to community impacts. I think, what do we want our communities to be? Do we want them to be just places where wealthy people can live, or do we want, have a broad range of population? So what are we going to do about it? And this, as I said, is a call to action. We've come up with various strategies that I can, you know, call out into four areas. Strategy one is, we need to come up with an overall education program for the region. And this is not typical education. It's really, you know, how do we inform people that the magnitude of this crisis and the impact that it's having on our county? I mean, it's not unique to Berkshire County. It's all over Massachusetts and all over the country in many ways. But how can we, as a community, come together about that? And we, you know, some of our items that we're going to work on are a annual summit to talk about the housing issues. But more importantly, I think, we're going to be working towards a Berkshire Housing Coalition. So these will be a group of, a network of influencers that can work to, you know, advocate for housing development projects as we go forward. Another strategy that we identified is, we need to build a supportive environment for housing development. And this really requires working with municipalities to provide support, employer advocacy, advocate for training programs for the building trades, and taking advantage of some of the state programs that we can tend to deal with, to really, you know, utilize the full gamut of things that we can work on. Next item, strategy that we identified, was really advocating for housing programs that meets the needs of the Berkshires. And I mentioned the 30% rule. If we can clarify that, that would be a big deal in terms of getting housing renovated. But we really need more programs to address housing rehab. And the types of programs that the state offers typically do not fit the scale of development for the Berkshires. You know, they're geared at, you know, multi-hundred-unit developments, and we don't have those in the Berkshires, and we don't need those in the Berkshires. What we need are small-scale projects that have some subsidies. When we started this project, the cost of a housing unit was about $300,000. Now, it's approaching $500,000 if you're trying to build an affordable unit. So it's really, that's really the magnitude of the problem. And we need some assistance to help with that. Next step is, we need to really secure those financial resources. So these can be local. There are a number of things that communities can do, such as the hotel motel tax on short-term rentals, or affordable housing trusts, or the Community Preservation Act. But there are also things that we need to tap into through the various recovery funds. And I know we've been trying to work with our legislative delegation on some ideas for getting some programs specific to the Berkshires. So immediately, what we're going to be doing, working on, is, One Berkshire is going to be working with the business community. My organization is going to be working on municipal readiness with municipalities, on zoning issues, those types of things. And Berkshire Housing Development is going to be taking the lead on what we think is an exciting opportunity to work with CHAPA, which is the statewide advocacy housing organization for Berkshire County, on a municipal engagement initiative. We're really trying to build this coalition. And I invite all of you to participate on that in whatever way that you can, to help work, to help support housing development of all times, all types of the Berkshires. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to AJ and Joe.
So AJ, I guess you'd like self-introduction.
Would you like me to, would you like me to do another introduction?
What I would like to know, is this a click or an arrow for moving the presentation?
Arrow.
Arrow. Okay. Well, morning, everyone. It's been a while. I'm now stepping into the role of Executive Director for the Berkshire Black Economic Council. It's definitely exciting. And we have some data to present from some initial benchmarking that we conducted in September 2021, from the Berkshire Black Businesses and Entrepreneurs who we represent. And our mission is to aid and advocate economic development on the behalf of Berkshire County's Black Businesses and Entrepreneurs. So let's begin. One question that we asked is how long you've been in business. And as you can see, the majority of the businesses that we're working with have been in business for under two years. But then, we also have a few that have been here for almost 20-plus years. So we have quite the array. An important question that we asked is whether or not businesses are officially certified as a minority-owned business. It's one thing to be Black and to own a business. It's another thing to actually have the MBE certification. And so that's one data point that we hope to move. We also asked the question of whether or not our businesses have been in touch with the Massachusetts Office of Supplier Diversity. That's an important question to understand because, for procurement reasons, as well, as well as visibility, it's important for our businesses to be on the statewide directory so that their businesses can be contacted and businesses can purchase from them. This was a jarring number for many reasons. A business needs to be able to depend on income and dependable income to be able to plan both short and long term. So as we can see here, 72% of our Black Businesses and Entrepreneurs don't have contracts or long-term agreements. So we're hoping that with the wonderful work of our team, but also our community partners, we'll be able to move the needle there as well. This too. 68% of Black Businesses and Entrepreneurs didn't receive COVID-19 assistance. So while there's this heavy push for diversity, equity, inclusion, anti-racism, that number is where it sat. And at the time when we took this survey, there were about 60 businesses on our directory, and 25 are telling us that 68% of them did not receive COVID-19 assistance. We can see why our businesses aren't scaling up. But there's room to grow. To begin addressing the issues that our businesses and entrepreneurs have reported to us, we began to develop this website. There you go. To begin addressing the issues regarding the data that we presented, we built out the state current and economic development needs happening in the Black community right near Berkshire County. A place for pride, a place for celebration. We have our membership, our directory, which is still being built out, as well as our programming, which is being to inspire economic justice efforts, increase the visibility of Berkshire County's Black businesses, and inspire local partnerships and increase supply and diversity by raising awareness issues pertaining to local Black entrepreneurs and businesses. We also have our bulletin, a place for the community to post programs, events, and information, as well as opportunities that are related to our mission. As you can see here, this is a great place for young minds, as well as Berkshire County professionals and visitors, to see what's going on in this place we call home. Additionally, we will have a calendar where we will host events and programming happening in Berkshire County, so that our guests, as much as our residents, can take advantage of all the offerings that are happening throughout the county. My favorite page is our opportunities page. We have matchmaking, job opportunities, grants and technical assistance, and mentorships. Check it out. We have business-to-business matchmaking, where businesses in Berkshire County can engage with our directory by simply applying here and completing this matchmaking form, which will then be submitted to our directory for response. We also have internships for supervisors and for interns. The supervisor can complete this form and post it to our website. One piece to highlight is that all internships must be paid. We also have an application form that aligns with that of the supervisor. And in doing so, making it easy for the intern to recycle or refurbish their application for future We have job opportunities that are from the community, which send a signal to the Black community that these places are being intentional about diversifying their staff, which is a question for a lot of Black professionals who are concerned whether or not they will have to overcome racial barriers in the application process. We also have grants and technical assistance. And last but not least, mentorships. If you're a corporation, business leader, or retiree who wish to pass on their wisdom to accelerate the growth of an entrepreneur, you can post a mentorship opportunity and begin building a relationship with someone here to help their business grow. So that's what we're about, folks. Our objective is to achieve entrepreneurial self-sufficiency and to support Black businesses and economic development in both the private sector, but as well as the arts and culture sector that make up Berkshire County. Please visit our website, and do not hesitate to reach out to me directly if you have any questions or if you would like to partner with us. Thank you. But that's it. That's our website. We're really proud of it. We want you all to come check it out, utilize what we have to offer. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me directly. And also, if you have any recommendations for how we can improve the website, then let us know that too, because we want to make it user-friendly. Thank you, everyone.
So I've been trying to make some notes on my, on my phone, mostly because I couldn't read the notes that I was scribbling before when I started, which is something I'm sure my colleagues at Berkshire United Way can appreciate. I want to thank, again, our hosts at, here at the Berkshire Innovation Center, the sponsors of the Benchmark Project and the Benchmark Data, and then our presenters this morning. You know, let's hear it for Jake, for Mark, for Carrie, for Tom, for AJ. Thank you all for being part of this presentation. So just, just a few thoughts to bring it all full circle. And I'm going to trust that you all can hear me and that this mic will take care of the video stream. You know, Jake, you said it really well right at the beginning. The data is the backbone of who we are in every corner of our life. If we don't measure, what we can't measure, we can't act on effectively. We are Fonzie jumping the shark. Carrie, you said it really well too. The data that we want to look at is agnostic. It's unbiased data. And it informs our storytelling, because we know that good data-informed narratives make a difference. You know, Mark, you talked about COVID data, and that's something that we followed for two and a half years, every, every day, every hour. You can look at the national level and what happens when data is manipulated or denied, to see why data is important and why it matters. And all of us here, in whatever organization we represent, we have a mission. And if we boil it all down, the missions that we share are about improving Berkshire County, quality of life, education, housing, arts, tourism, culture, across the gamut. So the data becomes a measure of our mission effectiveness, and it becomes our call to action. Mark, you did, you did a great job with a, with a really dense, heavy lift, you know, presenting all of that data. Thank you so much. And I want to thank, you know, the 100-plus people who were active and engaged and participated in, in helping to develop the 82 indicators and the 32 that we, we selected for the, for the report. And I was on one of those, one of those data teams. And that process of trying to decide, what is, what is an indicator that meets all those, those benchmarks that Jake talked about, that we can, that we can measure, that we can replicate, that are, that are high-impact? So thanks to everybody. This is data that will inform and empower our community. It is, as Mark said, central. It's public. It's credible. It is point-in-time data, though. So we know that there are leading indicators, there are lagging indicators, but it's all coming from reputable data sources. So we can use it to inform our planning and our action as we go forward. We talked about the Berkshire Blueprint, the Housing Report. Again, I'm just going to give that thing a huge shout-out. It was, it was comprehensive. It was cross-cutting, and it was actionable. You know, it has steps that we all can, we all can take. So the goal of the benchmarks, the goal of BLYC, isn't to duplicate work that's existing, but it's to inform, it's to activate, it's to improve, it's to coordinate. We do have successes to, to celebrate. Incomes going up, our community by and large being healthier. Poverty rate going down. I would say those of us in the nonprofit sector may want to interrogate that. I would say those of us in the nonprofit sector may want to interrogate that. Again, it's a point-in-time data point, and I think, you know, as we see the COVID adjustment, we may see that that reality shifts. But for the data, it does tell us a good story. But the challenges, they're deep. Academic struggles, mental health, substance abuse, family violence, those are at a crisis point. As Tom said, is housing at a crisis point? The disparities by race are shocking. We know they existed, but to see those data points represented, you know, the disparity in poverty rates between 8.4 and 31, the disparity between homeownership, 72.5 and 28.5. And there's history for that, but there's all kinds of current reasons for that. And as we look and worry about a housing crisis, those disparities become really concerning points. As we look at academic struggle and the mental health crisis in the Berkshires, you see how those things intersect. You know, AJ's dataset, the amount of work that exists to get businesses into mob certification to make sure that when COVID relief funds are available, they're equitably distributed. Everyone has information, everyone has access. So we identify needs, we promote access and action. We know the benchmarks are a baseline for setting agendas for those cross-sector shared goals I talked about at the beginning, the work of the Berkshire Leadership Impact Council. You know, our charge, our mission talks about identifying pressure points, those three to five points where we can dig deeply into the data. And I think we heard them very, very clearly in the survey responses. You know, it is housing, it is mental health, it's academic struggles, it's those disparities. So we'll look into those. I charge everybody to use this data, it's publicly available in your work. And then, if there's a call to action for this, here it is. Push back against the narratives that aren't informed by the data. Take the time to understand the issues, how they affect your work, your sector, but the county as a whole. Empathize with the concerns of people who say, you know, who believe a narrative that isn't supported by data, but don't accept that narrative has to persist. Help to redirect. And all of us have the opportunity and the responsibility, and now the tools, to tell better stories for and about the Berkshires. And to wrap it up, I'm just going to grab two words that I heard AJ say. We want to talk about stories of pride and celebration. We have challenges, we work to overcome them, but our vision, if it's fueled by pride and celebration, then we're on the right track for the Berkshires. And one point for pride and celebration is, tomorrow morning, 8:30, Nonprofit Center of the Berkshires, awards online. You can register to watch the presentation. It is a representation of the work happening in the nonprofit sector, people who are leaders, people who are activists, people who are informed by data and who make a difference. So it's a really great week of celebrating everything that's good about Berkshire County. The weather's cooperating. Thank you so much, enjoy the day.